Win on the transportation side of it. We're a long way away from markets, so we've got to figure out, well, what can we produce here that we can make some money at? And so we've got to, I think the manufacturers I see making money here in Montana produce some high quality products themselves for high prices that they can then afford to transport someplace. They have these, they've carved out these little small niches in markets and they're looking to do it like that. So, and that's a lousy answer to your county commissioner question, but I think that the politics of it is really important a lot. How do you, how do you make this a good place to come and do business here in Mineral County? And I think there's a lot of work to do with the community in those things. My dad is a mayor of a little community guy. And I remember him pulling his hair out over the fact that he could never get a mayor of culturalists and farmers' ranches around him who participated in the development of the community. And so he spent a lot of his time out talking to people, saying, hey, Buck, can't help me don't do this, town's going to dry up. And that helped, I think, to encourage making a lot of places for people to come in and work.
My question is, really in these economic times, how many industries are really looking at places to actually start up a business? And the other part of that question is, where would the commissioners find that information of businesses who may be interested in positioning themselves?
Well, that's, that's a good quote. That's a very good question. Because, you know, I think to think about, sometimes I think we think we can exist like the Soviet Union, we used to think they could do, they thought they could engineer economies. They thought that they could identify a business and they'd place this business in this particular community and things would be great. I mean, that's kind of the social engineering part of it. In the United States and our capitalist system, we're kind of on the other end of that. We say, hey, if you have a decent business environment, businesses will find you and enable you. And so somewhere in between here is kind of where I think we're at. One of the most successful businesses in Montana right now, and one of the small manufacturing services that I deal with at least, is a company that moved here from Pennsylvania. Why did they move here from Pennsylvania? Because they didn't want their kids growing up in Philadelphia. You know, so they came here. But how do you, how would you have identified them to say, hey, why don't you come to Montana? I don't know the answer to that.
Where would we look for them? Those that are interested? I mean, you can do Google, sure, it's on most everything, but is there a list of companies that may be looking, or is it just something we would have to be just more proactive in researching ourselves?
Well, you know, I can give you a list. You know, we have 3,000 manufacturers in Montana. So that's about the extent of my dollars of lists, but I would bet that there's a list of Department of Commerce for every state for small manufacturers that are out there. And I suppose you could do mass mailing to them. I don't know what you, what you would yield out of that.
My other, my other aspect to this question too is, what I see in Mineral County just from doing a needs assessment from our health department, is we have a lot of natural resources here as far as enticing people who might want to spend revenue here, therefore promoting businesses to develop because of that. And so maybe instead of looking at our focus outside, is to look within, to see what we can actually promote to draw people here for the revenue, because we are on I-90, which is a really accessible interstate, which connects us very well. So, in my mind, looking at our natural resources, which is phenomenal, and as you said, it's a beautiful place. And I know most young families that we see coming through to our health department, you know, we always ask periodically, why did you move here? Well, because we want to raise our kids here, because we feel it's a safe place. So if we still focus on, as a community, to promote that, as well as the resources, try to do a way of really tapping into that.
I think that's the way you draw people into these communities. I mean, I, you know, I have this latent thought in my own mind, just because, you know, having grown up in a town that's really diminished to almost nothing right now, but, you know, do you, is that an appropriate activity for you to go and go out and drive around and talk to companies like, you know, Microsoft, Apple, those sort of companies, to find out what they'd be willing to do in a place like Montana? I mean, I think that there's some merit to that. Those jobs that those people have, it doesn't matter where they live, and they, it might be, there might be some merit to that, that sort of really, you know, really getting down to brass tacks and getting out and talking to some people, putting in shape, the woodwork, doing some of that, because you do have these attributes that are here. It's a beautiful place to live and it's safe. And that matters to people that have, that have lived, I've lived in Washington DC for a while, and you know, you know what it's like to, to be around, to be in communities like this. And that's what has to be sold. You've got to go out and sell it to somebody. And Bill Gates spends mon, spends time in Montana for crying out loud. He's been holding, he has jets out there, the jet center about, you know, probably a couple of months a year, you know. So I mean, it's not like people don't know about it, but then we need to think about how does that translate from these people that want to buy up our land here and lock your way out of it, as opposed to people that want to come here and create jobs? And I think we've, and I think it's, I've often, I have, like I said, this latent thought that we ought to, we need to be able to beat the bush or something. You know, even in the job I have at MSU, and maybe I should spend some time with, talking to these companies that might be interested. It's just got a manufacturer, a little bit of discussion going on here this morning about Colorado. Can you blur those people up here? Well, go up to Calisville sometimes, if you're a manufacturing group that's in Calisville nowadays, not very many people know about. In fact, people in Calisville don't even want to talk about it. But, but you know, that's the kind of things that could happen. And you get a little cluster, and that cluster can then, you know, actually amount to something over time.
What I've seen in a trend too here recently is that, which I think is really encouraging, is that I'm seeing some younger people moving in and families, but then on the other hand, you know, we don't, as a community, don't have anything targeting that, that population. So, you know, that makes them question whether they wanted to continue to stay here, because really, Mineral County would be a great place to, even for a commute to Missoula, it's nothing.
Sure, yeah, they're close. If there's young people moving in here, you better make sure your Wi-Fi, your internet service is on top notch.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You have to have, if you don't have those things, people are, those are just some, you know, things you might think are really similar, not for somebody that's, not for an engineering kid that's been living at work for Boeing that's now decided to move here. Because, you know, those things really matter to folks like that. So you need to make sure that those parts of the infrastructure are really here. We don't want to think about Wi-Fi as infrastructure, but I would value that it's one of the most important bits of infrastructure you can have anymore. It's going to replace your telephone and your television, sort of, some of these things. And so it's, it's just the nature of those sorts of investments being made that can matter, but...
And I think that's small enough for us to grasp, to be able to start on in order to grow.
Yes, yeah, those are not the projects necessarily anymore, but I think they're really important to, if you, to be, you know, kind of in some respects, kind of being with the times, I guess, as much as anything. Not that I don't think internet's going to, it's going to critically important as we really construct. You grasp one of the new technologies that come up tomorrow is about, you know, it's really, it's just such a beautiful country up here.
I think it is.
Well, it is. It's just this corridor that goes from Missoula to, you know, to Idaho, it's just one of the most beautiful parts of the world. And, I mean, and there's a lot, and the challenge you have is there's a lot of people who like it just to stay exactly like that.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's a political challenge, I think, that you have. You've got to really address that in some fundamental way. And it's not easy, but it's certainly a beautiful part of the story. I appreciate everybody hanging in here with us, but it's very interesting to come up here in Mineral County.
Any more questions, comments?
Well, here, let me give you a book, by the way. We have all these publications here, eight to all the magazines.
Like nobody can read.
This is dangerous, you know, when I get out and stay here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, this has been a project that's taken, all, there's lots of people involved in it. We have, oh, Northwestern Energy's been a big part of this, and Montana Chambers helps us out a bunch. So we've got an extra one next. Any other, the other part of this too, is if there's anything we can do for you down at MSU in terms of providing any research support for you or analysis support that you might need, don't get afraid to call us, you know, we're state employees.
Well, since you mentioned it, George, I would like to see somebody, we have what we call the Secure Rural Schools Act, which is something that offsets the lack of timber cut or timber dollar. And it's basically a, I call it, in my own personal opinion, a federal welfare program for counties, because it's in lieu of jobs or in lieu of, in other words, they took our timber cut over 10 years and averaged it, and then from that they figure out what the counties get every year to offset the lack of timber cut. Well, every year it's on the chopping block, and every year it's whether it's going to get funded or not. And it's, is it like 1.7 million for this county?
Yeah, it goes down a little bit every year.
So, you look at that, that amount of revenue, and if that went away next year, we probably wouldn't be in this room, there'd be somebody else in this room.
Yeah, okay.
Because that level of it, and so, but statewide, all of the timber counties are the counties that have basically BLM or Forest Service landings, get some, some form of it. I don't think anybody at the state level has ever looked at that total number to see what the impact would be and what, because as I see it, state government's basically going to have to pick that up. Because the counties won't have it. There's laws that says the state, or the schools will get the money. And so that's going to have to come out of somewhere else. The county's going to have to levy mills, be almost beyond what local property tax payers can pay to offset that. So you're going to see numerous county governments bankrupt, basically. And so, but I don't think anybody's ever really paid attention to it, we've never heard anything from the state. As far as I know, the commissioners could maybe address this. I don't see the state out there as an advocate for the program or for anything to offset this.
That's right, yeah. It's something we can help take note of.
I really appreciate that. That's, that's probably one of the bigger looming issues in our county right here, right now. This is going to affect everything.
Yeah, one of the issues that we're dealing with in Bozeman right now, which is, we haven't gotten very far down the pipe and analyzed it yet, but we're really worried about the flow of capital, financial capital in the rural counties. And one of the reasons we're worried about that is under some of the, under the new bank, the Frank Sac, there's new auditing requirements that the banks are having to worry about, and just is put a particular heavy burden on small banks. And so we're very interested in taking a look at the impact of that, as we look at rural communities, at least in the flow of money that's coming into there from, you know, business development and growth expansion and so on. So, that's one of the topics that we're on, and I'll probably have something out within the next year or so on that particular topic. But we're very concerned about the, the health and wellbeing, I guess if you will, of small banks, as a result of what we see going on with our attempts to control big risks, with Bank of America taking more, you know, the most part of the most part of the system.
Anything else? Normally what we do in our CNDs, we have, we have agencies here and entities here, and we have a kind of report. What's going on with Nine Mile District area?
Well, anybody that reads like, kind of, Porser was a hole, and they read paper, those budgets are, we've kind of discussed some new direction as we, we're going to be shaping that out for us tomorrow, where we're, where we're going to be looking at it. So, last week I talked about our ramp up of hiring folks, and so this week, or this month, what we're looking at tomorrow really heavily is what we can, we've got a moratorium basically on hiring all of our young folks and bringing on that workforce until we get that, which is, because that is where we get our work done. And a lot of our work comes from that season workforce. You mentioned the security of those schools, you know, we saw, we talked about this last month about, you know, Bockus and Wyden really pushing hard to get that omnibus, and I think that omnibus went on a bill. Now how that ferrets through, we'll see, but it was, you know, the funding is there. I think they're still looking at, we talked, we talked last month about some of the states, you know, the proportionate amount that they get was overwhelming, you know, Oregon compared to Montana or in Idaho is just huge. And I think they were looking at trying to level out a little bit so you can stretch it further. I haven't seen the final on what that proportion looks like. All I know is it did get on, it did get on, Bockus is a very big supporter, it's good for Montana, I mean, to have that kind of power behind that, that would be good for the bill, I guess. Other than that, I know Tanya said that she was, Johnny Fisher's going to be signing that drop Olympian project, hopefully, maybe she said next week. And so, that'll be working through the process, so I know that one's been a long time coming, and we'll see how, how that plays out.
Will they have a short return on that when they get all that?
It's a recreational trail.
Well, I think, Jim might have more of a idea on that.
Would be a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Well, because it's been so long now coming that, the discussions that we had about the four wheeler part, the bike part, the open part, the closed parts, everybody's kind of, it's been quite a while. I think a little refresher on it as to what's what would be nice.
And so we've also, we've been working with some of our groups and collaborations, I'm not sure, you know, what that really looks like on the west end, but on our side, defining what we're going to be doing for the next five years project, so that's always a big interest of folks, and I think we've got a lot of good projects on the list to bring forward. I know we're going to be offering, hopefully, a few good sales this year too. We heard that the market might have took a hit, but, you know, even one to two, one dollar to two dollars is still an increase. But that's kind of how I relate it to, is it was an increase, but we were, we're pretty far in the tank on some of that stuff, so it's going to, hopefully that keeps creeping up with the market. And we see some of these products starting to move out, which, as we know, every time any of these, you know, tricons and the locals start, they start taking some of that out of the woods, that increases jobs instantly. So, hopefully that keeps on increasing this summer.
Your moratorium thing with the summer help, how will that, say, affect, hardly any snowpack, or it doesn't seem like it, whether we have horse fire, who's going to be the primary, are you going to count on the out of state people, the hot shot crews coming in?
County tuitioners is where we're going to go.
We're still hiring firefighters.
Well, I heard someone kind of fix all the, you guys are the first. Well, no, that's, that is a real big talk tomorrow, is that big national push is robbing Peter to pay Paul. And is that robbing, as we've all seen, robbing our other programs to pay for fire support? And it's always a tough one to swallow, because fire is something that you may, you may ramp up for that and get nothing. That's, that's the risk and the challenge is that goes with the, with the decisions. I'm hoping that, for what we've seen, that we're going to take, we'll be able to absorb and somewhere else and be able to get that, that workforce to where we need it to be across, holistically across all departments. Let's see how it goes.
What about Superior District?
Oh, I think he's covered it quite well. We do continue to work on future timber sales. We're hoping that the one large project that's been held up will eventually get pushed through up Cedar Creek and Thompson Creek. Still waiting for consultation with Fish and Wildlife, but there's still activity along the cutoff that we can count on, and there's another project, the 12th Hammurac, should be going out soon. So, slowly moving forward. As far as temporary hiring, I know at least the fire management group will have, we're expecting to have the same number of firefighters this year, even though there may be impacts to the other departments, you know, we'll help out as we can to keep some of the other activities going with our firefighters, even if some of the other programs get impacted with their seasonal hiring, so.
Appreciate you being here. These guys run 87% of our town.
I got one question. On the Saint Regis Slashing Project.
Yes.
We recently sent out a letter on that. The letter we, we say you've said that that's going to be 35 acres, but yet it's spread out to three to five years to do 35 acres? I just had a question as to why.
Yeah, I'm not specifically sure what you're talking about. I know we've been active up in Saint Regis South, and we're currently writing prescribed fire plans for some of those areas that have had all the mechanical treatments done. I'm not sure why, I wouldn't understand why we'd spread 35 acres out over a number of years. We slash hundreds, hundreds of acres every year to prep them, so...
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I said too, and I just don't...
Maybe a zero got that wrong.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but I can look into it, or have Tanya get back with that.
I've got a letter there, if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'll take some notes and get back with Tanya.
Okay, thank you.
Those things with the hospital, Steve?
The commissioner's heard Charles Irvin from Dory Mortgage, I believe, if you remember him. He came in and spoke to our group about our new hospital, and what he does is arrange financing, works directly with USDA and developing a financing package for new hospitals. He's been pretty successful all across Montana doing that. In fact, he's never not been able to finance a facility. The board voted to engage him, to take a look at what we have submitted, our first, and it's not uncommon for a hospital to get their financing package rejected the first, second, third, fourth time. Ours was rejected the first time, but he thinks he can get it done for us. It may be a matter of realigning or redoing some architectural work, maybe downsizing, possibly doing more of a slow rollout of services, maybe we build a clinic first. Maybe that's all we can do, and then add on to that later. But he's going to take a look at that and, and see what he comes up with. But we're excited to have him on board, though. He's, he's had a lot of experience. You know, you talk about business development, we're, we work hard every day to do just that very thing. I mean, since I've been here, we have a single slice CT scanner, for example. To a lot of you, that, maybe that doesn't mean anything, but it's, it's not quality imaging. It's okay, but if you want to have better imaging, you go, people go to Missoula. We now have a 16 slice CT scanner, and people don't have to go to Missoula for everything. So that's keeping business here. Our CT scans basically doubled since we've had that CT scanner. One of the things we're working on, and we pretty well have it in place now, our, we have an ultrasound tech who's just finishing up her boards, and prior, prior to the, currently we have an ultrasound tech coming every Monday. We have an employee who just finished her ultrasound tech boards, or is in process of who will be able to do those, that services, that service all week long. So, we won't just have that every Monday and then be without the service, we'll have it all week long. So, again, that's another way to try to keep business in the community. Digital mammography, we just got a new digital mammography, or a grant for a digital mammography unit. Again, that's a more definitive tool. It's not just a screening tool, it's also a diagnostic tool, so women will not have to go to Missoula to do that. We hope to have that installed by, hopefully our best bet is by summer. We, Dr. Allier, I don't know if any of you are familiar with him, he was our orthopedic surgeon for a while, and he just had a traumatic neck injury, and it's looking like he will not even be able to practice anymore. But with that said, Dr. McNulty, we fired him, he's an orthopedic surgeon out of St. Mary's. He works in St. Mary's two days a week, Kellogg two days a week, and then he'll be working here one, let's see, I think two days a month, beginning, I think the 22nd of this month, he'll start taking patients. So it's nice to have orthopedics back here, so again, to keep, try to keep business here. We also have Dr. Bruce McClellan, he's an ear, nose and throat specialist in St. Regis. He's practicing there, I think, two days a month. He's already taking patients and already seen several patients in the area who have that issue, ear, nose and throat issues. We're in the process of getting a survey to look at the Alberton Clinic site. As I think most of you know, we have a grant for a school-based clinic in Alberton. They've kind of selected a piece of property on their school, or I guess it's by their football field where we put the clinic, so we're right in the process of surveying that We're very much involving the citizens of, or the community of Alberton. We met with their board, we met with seniors, they all really want to take a look and see what we want to build there. And what we're going to do is bring a bunch of them up to our St. Regis Clinic, have them take a look at it, and see what, you know, they like that, and we may tweak that a little bit, the design. What we'd like to do is build a meeting, a larger meeting space on the front of the clinic, so we can actually lock the clinic, and then they can use the meeting area or meeting space after hours. They're just very short on meeting space for a lot of the things they do there, so. We have a bus that we've acquired through a grant as well, that'll be going all the way from Salties to Alberton, picking up patients along the way who need to come to our facility. They'll make a stop at the pharmacy and other places to enable patients to get their services more locally. What else? We have a health fair coming up with Tricon, we've been working directly with Tricon, their employees, we're putting on a health fair for them in St. Regis. We intend on doing this annually or possibly biannually. They're very excited because a lot of their, a lot of their screening, pre-employed screening services, I believe they're sending their employees to Missoula. We'll be able to do all of that, we're acquiring a hearing testing machine, Dr. McClellan will be pretty much involved with that. But they're very excited to work with us, and again, I think that'll help keep a little more business here locally. Our Innovations Grant that we've been working on, you know, again, talking about business development, we've had at least two to three partners through that grant who've expressed an interest in relocating a portion of their business to our county. One of those is Medical Imaging Associates, we're working hard with them to...
So they're still working?
Yeah, we're working hard with them to try to help them realize that they need to have a presence in Mineral County. They already have a pretty big presence in Montana, but they, they are looking at possibly Superior or St. Regis to locate a small contingency of radiologists. They already have radiologists traveling from Idaho Falls all the way over to Kellogg, and that's one of their hospitals, Kellogg, they read for. I keep telling them, you know, you really need to have a presence here, you don't have, they won't have to travel as far, and they can still read from here to, for other facilities. But, so they're, they're very interested in, plus with our Innovations Grant, what they can do is, we can reach out through our Innovations Project to other critical access hospitals and have them do their reads at a discounted rate. And that's what the, the grant is all about, is, it's all about saving CMS so many millions of dollars within a three-year period. So that's, that's something that very much intrigues the radiology group, but it also intrigued the government, because they know they can save dollars through reimbursement. Merck has expressed an interest, Merck Medical, that's a huge company. So we're, we're working on, just by means of things we're doing through the grant, we are working on, I mean, we understand we need to have business development in the county, and we're working with partners to try to do that, so.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Steve, for being there. Anybody else got anything?
Current EMT classes they're going through is about half over. And so far, we haven't lost any students. Normally you lose about a third, or I think we're just stubborn.
How many do you have?
There's fifteen, fifteen in class. But, you know, it's, it's not over till it's over. And you know, but usually the ones who are the weaker students will drop out in the first third or half. Nobody's dropped out yet, so hopefully we'll get a few out of there. And they have to meet, they have to meet two different testing, actually three different testing schedules. They have to pass our class first before we send them on to test for national, before we send them on to the state. But each one has a stair stepping disqualification set of things in there. So you, you actually end up weeding them out when we should be doing the weeding out initially. And that's part of the reason why it is that stair stepping, to get away from the good old boy thing, well, I seen Joe do this or Joe do that. You know, and so we'll, we'll pass them because he's my neighbor or whatever. This takes that, that anxiety of the local level out of it. But at the same time, we have responsibility to not send them on and let them do the dirty work. We need to be able to be upfront to. And so it's, it's kind of unusual that nobody has dropped out yet, but proof of the pudding is coming up pretty quick. And they know it. And so we may be losing a few.
Well, we hope we don't lose any of our successes.
Yeah. But it's halfway through. It's, it's a, it's a hard thing for the students because they have so much studying to do. And it's just crammed all on. And it's hard for the instructors to be there and, and put out that effort too. It's tough, but we're halfway through.
Hey, Chad, have you heard anything more? Are any changes on the Clearwater?
Side, their decision, their, their process of closure.
I've heard of, but it's a good thing about it. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you again, Dr. Gaines for coming over. Appreciate it.